I'd like to call the caucus meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public notification of this meeting was published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of the agenda for the caucus meeting of July 14, 2025.
Some movement, Chairman.
We have a motion by Councilman Glover. Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor by raising your hand for approval of the agenda. Okay. We have two council members who will not be here tonight. They are gone out of town. And we have one council member online, Councilman Passamit. Have we -- we have not heard from Councilman Dawson yet, so. All right. Moving along, is there -- we have this on the agenda, but I am not aware of any council member discussion at this time.
Oh, I was just gonna --
Okay.
-- comment about Brian Campbell. He's a PGA player, and he's won two recent tournaments, and he lives in Beaufort County here, so it's huge news. And I was asking the chair and vice chair if we could give him a proclamation, maybe in the fall.
Okay. All right. Recognize him for what he's accomplished. All right. Well, maybe we can work on that. All right. At this time, I'd like to -- we have several items for executive session, and I will read through those and then entertain a motion to go into executive session. Number six, under executive session, under South Carolina Code Section 30-4-70A1, to engage in discussion incident to employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of a person regulated by a public body. Annual performance review of county administrator and clerk to counsel. Number seven, under South Carolina Code 30-4-70A2, receipt of legal advice where the legal advice relates to pending litigation, Pine Island Property Holdings LLC and Pine Island GCLLC versus Beaufort County. Number eight, pursuant to South Carolina Code Section 30-4-70A2, receipt of legal advice where the legal advice relates to pending litigation, the South Carolina opioid litigation's San Dawes, am I saying that correctly? Settlement. Number nine, under South Carolina Section 30-4-70A2, receipt of legal advice where the legal advice relates to pending litigation, James Ware, et cetera, et al. versus Beaufort County. There may be items arising out of executive session. I have a motion. I have a motion by Councilman Glover. Is there a second?
A second.
And a second by Councilman Brown. All in favor to go into executive session. By shy sign of -- raise your hands, and that is unanimous. We will adjourn to a separate room for executive session. Downstairs.
Yes, ma'am.
Downstairs. Okay.
Two motions coming out of caucus. One of them, I'd like, I think Mr. McClellan, Councilman McClellan, has a motion coming out of caucus.
Want that now?
Yes, sir.
This is a, this is a motion dealing with the matter of Beaufort County at all versus the pharmaceutical manufacturing company called SanDoz, S-A-N-D-O-Z. I move the council authorize the county administrator to execute the settlement agreement related to the SanDoz Drug Manufacturing Corporation in the opioid litigation for the amount and terms as discussed in executive session.
I'll second that.
We have a second by Councilman Reitz. All in favor by show of hands of the motion. Mr. Councilman Dawson, do you vote yea? And Mr. Passamet, can you hear us?
I now can hear you.
Okay, it was a motion made by?
Want me to read it again?
Please read it again.
This is a matter of, in the matter of Beaufort County at all versus pharmaceutical manufacturing company SanDoz. I move the council authorize the county administrator to execute the settlement agreement related to the SanDoz Drug Manufacturing Corporation in the opioid litigation for the amount and terms as discussed in executive session.
Okay, all, and it was seconded by Councilman Reitz. Councilman Dawson, can you hear?
I can hear you. My video will come in, but I can hear you.
Okay, all in favor by sign of hands or yea?
I'm in favor.
Okay, and that is unanimous. All right, thank you. We have another motion coming out of executive session. Councilman Brown?
James Ware versus Beaufort County Buckingham Landing. I move that council authorize the county attorney to attempt to negotiate a settlement agreement with James Ware and the other plaintiffs in accordance with the terms discussed in executive session, and that we authorize the county administrator to execute all necessary documents related to a settlement agreement in accordance with the terms discussed in executive session.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Councilman Glover seconds the motion by show of hands. All in favor?
I'm in favor.
And that is unanimous. Thank you. There's no further action coming out of caucus. I need a motion to adjourn the caucus meeting, please.
A motion.
Councilman Brown made a motion to adjourn the caucus meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor by show of hands? Okay, caucus meeting is adjourned. All right, now we are moving into our July 14th regular county council meeting, but we need five minutes to set up for the transition.
Oh, okay.
We are ready. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation by Councilman Tom Reitz.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the Lord Jesus Christ.
Please remain standing.
Thank you all for being here. Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to be together here this evening to work together for the people that we serve. It is our prayer, it is our hope that we do it in glorifying your holy Son, Jesus Christ, in his name, amen.
Amen. At this time, I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion.
A second?
A second.
All in favor of approval of the agenda? Show of hands, and that is approved. This meeting was advertised in accordance with the Freedom of, South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, correct? And published. Next on the agenda is the approval of two sets of minutes, June 23rd, 2025 caucus and county council minutes, and June 26th, 2025 county council workshop minutes. We have a motion to approve those minutes.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes from June 23, 2025, and June 26, 2025.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
By show of hands, and that is unanimous. And, Mr. Dawson. Our next item is our administrator's report.
Evening, Madam Chair, Council. We have an employee recognition this evening, and then we're going to recognize some retirees. I'm looking forward to this, so first off, we're going to start with Parks and Recreation, Ms. Rihanna Ree Washington. Her position title is Administrative Specialist, and you've been with the county 14 months.
Yes, sir.
Since May 28th last year.
Yes, sir.
So you're a little bit more on me, couple months on me, so that's good. Summary of her duties, she handles the front desk at the Buckwalter Recreation Center and supports other centers as needed. As a valued member of the administrative team, she delivers excellent customer service by responding to inquiries about parks and recreation facilities and programs, processes memberships, and checks in patrons. Throughout her duties, she consistently opposes policies and procedures to ensure the safety of both patrons and staff. Something unique to share. She could play the tenor and alto saxophone, which I played many, many years ago, but I'm sure you're great at it.
(Laughter).
Yeah, that's right. That'd be scary.[1509.14][1509.14](Laughter). So anyway, just want to recognize you, and if you have any comments, we appreciate your service. If you don't, that's okay. Whatever you like.
I want to say, this was a shock, as y'all can see, but I appreciate being recognized, and thank you.
Okay, next, we're going to recognize our, some retirees. First up, I'd like to recognize Ms. Marie Smalls, who's been the Director of the Beaufort County Board of Voter Registration and Elections.
She's retiring? (Applause). Yes, yes.
Thank you all. I'm going to make a few comments, and then I'm going to welcome Mr. Sweeney, who's the Chair of the Commission, to come up. But we'd like to extend our sincere appreciation and congratulations on your well-deserved retirement after 43 years of dedicated service. It's a long time with Beaufort County, and we're grateful for that. We know you're going to have a great time afterwards, though. She began her career in October of 1982. She began working in employee services, which is now known as human resources, as a personnel specialist, and moved her way up to Director in 1990. She then retired under the T E R I, Terry Program, in September of 2004, and then, I don't think you could decide, so after a year, decided to come back. And she came back in 2005 as an election administrator, registrar with the Board of Voter Registration and Elections of Beaufort County, and August of 2012 became the Director of the department. As we mark this incredible milestone, we wish, we want to wish Ms. Smalls the best in her new chapter. May your retirement be filled with joy, relaxation, and spending more time with your loved ones. Thank you again for your unwavering dedication and years of service with Beaufort County. You will most definitely be missed. So we also have something for you here.[1658.42][1658.42](Applause).
Mr. Administrator and Council members, it's a pleasure to say a few words to accompany the appropriate and deserved recognition of Marie Smalls. My name is Matt Sweeney, and I'm the Chairman of the Board of Voter Registration and Elections of Beaufort County. Marie's service to residents of Beaufort County actually started about 50 years ago, when as a junior and senior in high school, she actually drove a county school bus for elementary students. Her service had several stops along the way, most recently as Director of the Board of Voter Registration and Elections. During Marie's 20-plus years of service with the board, she oversaw tremendous growth in Beaufort County. The counts of both voting precincts and voters nearly doubled to 134 precincts and more than 140,000 voters today. And at the last election, she and her team managed more than 800 citizen poll workers. That's no small task, since most of those fellow residents work elections one day a year and must do so with perfection. Marie's service to voters was recognized both within South Carolina and nationally. Under Marie's leadership, our Voter Registration and Elections Office received not one, but three Excellence in Elections awards from the South Carolina Association of Registration and Election Officials. Marie also was awarded by the association the Moore Award, which is the highest level award that they provide. And Marie's service was valued nationally as well. She has served as one of 100 members of the United States Election Assistance Commission's Local Leadership Council. As Marie transitions to serving her community in retirement, she will leave behind a great legacy of hard work, dedication to service, and a in retirement, she will leave behind a great legacy of hard work, dedication to service, and a culture of integrity for elections in Beaufort County. On behalf of the entire Board of Voter Registrations and Elections, I would like to thank Marie Smalls for her long and dedicated legacy of service, and wish her the best in her next phase.
I just would like to say thank you, thank you, thank you. It's been a wonderful ride, 43 years plus, and of course, our success would not be a success without the people of Beaufort County. County Council, you guys played a wonderful role in making sure that we have what we need when it comes down to budget. I would like to thank my Board for the support over these years. They've been great. I know sometimes they didn't always understand what we were doing and why we were doing it, but they always supported the effort, and I want to thank them for that. And I would like to also thank my family, my husband, who's been my biggest fan and my greatest supporter, and my children, they're all in the audience today. That's my husband. And my church family, they are here as well, supporting me, and I just want them to know how much I appreciate them and I love them dearly. Like Mr. Sweeney said, I know this is just another step into my life, another chapter of my life, and I will continue serving my church and my community, and I just pray God's strength, and thank you all again very much. And the greatest staff in the whole state, the whole United States.
We are going to miss you.
Is your family going to be in the picture, Ms. Smalls?
They all can come up, let's go. That's awesome.
Hi, Matt. Hi, Marie.
Madam Chair, can I take a moment?
Sure.
Of privilege, I want to commend Mrs. Smalls for her time on voter registration as a Director. I know that there are times when precincts got divided, people were making all kinds of accusations about the voter registration, couldn't get things right and stuff, and I know she had to deal with the public, but I've never heard once where she was unprofessional. So I want to say thank you for that.
Any, any other Council members?
I'd like to make another comment. Huge void. We're really going to miss you, and I did what Mr. Glover here said too, as well. It's just, I don't know how we're going to replace you. I don't know if Matt has somebody in mind or not, but yeah. Good luck in your retirement, too. Thank you so much.
Councilman Glover, I don't see on, but I agree with Councilman Glover, it's going to be very difficult. And she always dealt with the public in a very professional manner. Any other comments? We're good? Well, thank you so much.
Okay, next, we have, my pleasure to recognize a couple of personnel retiring from the Sheriff's Office. So first, we have Staff Sergeant Chelsea Soronka, if you're here. We'll go from there. So Staff Sergeant Chelsea Soronka is marking an impressive 26 years of service to the residents and visitors of Beaufort County. 20 of those were proudly spent with the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office. Her public service journey began in the Otter's Office before she joined the Sheriff's Office as an Animal Control Officer, back when the role was part of the agency. That's a little while back, so it's changed since then, but we appreciate that. Over the years, she's worn many hats, serving as a Community Resources Officer, School Resource Officer, Investigator, and most recently, as the Agency's Recruiting and Staffing Officer within the Administrative Division. No matter what role, Staff Sergeant Soronka has always focused on making a difference, saying the most rewarding part of her career has been serving in the community, educating, and helping others, especially in her current role, where she helps identify and recruit quality individuals to serve alongside the agency's men and women. Helping applicants achieve their dream of becoming law enforcement officers and watching them grow and succeed is incredibly fulfilling for her. She has also paved the way for others, serving as one of the agency's first Tactical Flight Officers and the only female to date to serve on the Sheriff's Office Dive Team. She has further contributed as an Advisor for the Explorers Program and a member of the agency's Honor Guard. Outside of work, she is passionate about the outdoors, enjoying camping, paddleboarding, swimming, biking, and gardening. She's also an avid reader, and most of all, proud of her family, and especially has her role as mother and a grandmother. So hopefully you'll have a lot more time for that. So that's exciting. So, thank you. We have a plaque for you.
Actually, I had not expected to be asked to say anything. I will say that it's been an honor to serve the citizens of Beaufort County in all of the ways that I've been allowed to, first at the Auditor's Office, and then at the Sheriff's Office, and it's been an absolutely fantastic ride. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Staff Sergeant Karen Denham from the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office. So a few comments on Staff Sergeant Karen Denham. Karen Denham, she's dedicated 28 years of service to the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office. Most recently, is a valuable member of the Administrative Division. She served as a Supervisor in the Civil Process and Warrants Unit, and also served as the Judgments and Plan Unit Development Officer. For the majority of her law enforcement career, Staff Sergeant Denham served as a Patrol Deputy, supervising enforcement teams both north and south of the Broad. Throughout her career, she embraced a variety of challenges that came with her role, but says the most rewarding work involved the Project Lifesaver Program. Being able to reunite a lost family member with loved ones using Project Lifesaver is rewarding. Originally from Elkins, West Virginia, Staff Sergeant Denham served in the U.S. Army Reserve as a 95B Military Patrol, or Police Officer. While attending college, she met a detective from the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office who shared, had a shared enthusiasm for the agency and community. She applied and began what has become a long and impactful law enforcement career. Notably, in 2004, she became the agency's first female certified Motor Officer. Outside of work, she enjoys riding her motorcycle, camping, and hiking. Her commitment to excellence earned praise from a local attorney who credited her with going above and beyond to help his client collect a longstanding judgment. "In all my years of practicing law," the attorney wrote, "I've never seen such an effort to assist in the collection of judgment. She should be commended for her diligent service. Staff Sergeant Denham is an example of professionalism, persistence, and public service, and we thank you for your service."
I just want to say thank you. It's an honor. I'm not as full of words as Chelsea, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, and wrapping this up, I just want to mention, we've got some folks here from the Marine Corps Air Station Beaufort Team. Ms. Howard and I had the pleasure last Friday to go to the Assumption of Command Ceremony for Colonel Trevor Felter, so we congratulate the team, his family, and look forward to working with him in the future. And with that, that concludes my remarks, pending any questions.
All right. Any questions? None? Thank you very much. All right. At this time, we will open it up for citizens' comments. I'd like to mention what we normally announce, that every member of the public who's recognized to speak shall limit comments to three minutes and observe the following protocol. Address the Chairman, and in speaking, avoid disrespect to Counsel and any personalities. Confin themselves to questions under the jurisdiction of County Council. Be mindful and respectful of those who are present and others who may be watching on television. Is there anyone that did not have an opportunity to sign up for a public comment? We had, we had one person added, Nikki Mack, you are on the list now, okay? So, all right. So we will go in the order in which people signed up.
Madam Chair, I believe I saw somebody with their hand up out there.
Oh, someone had their hand up to sign up for public comment?
Mike, 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 it's up here. It's up here.
It's right, it's right here. Yeah.
Hello, Mike. Here you go, buddy. Here you go. Hey, how are you?
Okay, the first person is Robert New, and the second person is Marquee Pre, Marquee? Okay, and Marquee, if you'll just line up, so after Robert's done, let's wait a minute while this person is signing in, when the room clears.
Writing his comments.
All we need is your name and your subject. The other is all optional. Okay, can we start the timer, Ms. Brock? Okay, Mr. New, if you will go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you for your dedication to this difficult job. Notwithstanding the legal shenanigans and the really expensive PR and lobbying efforts, one undeniable fact cannot be in dispute. The approval of any golf resort on St. Helena, which will be the de facto demise of the CPO, will wipe out the significant presence of the Gullah population on St. Helena that has existed for more than six generations. An exaggeration? Sadly, no. It is an undisputed fact, spanning more than a half-century of the Gullah experience, on sea islands from Cape Fear, North Carolina, to just north of Jacksonville, Florida. The Gullah population was significant on dozens of the sea islands, including in South Carolina, Kiowa, Johns Island, and Edisto. You all know the story. The sea islands were discovered, gated golf and resort communities everywhere. In short order, the Gullah populations either disappeared or were substantially diminished. It did not take long. So how did one island, just one island, keep the culture, the history, and the community alive, the CPO? A visionary collaboration of community and County Council, enshrined in the Comprehensive Plan and by ordinance. Genius, really. Now the developer, and those to come, will pitch that they are here to help the Gullah people. Don't fall for that fallacious argument, that the offered incentives really bribes for the community benefit. It is a fact, a hard fact, an indisputable fact, that this would be the death knell for the Gullah people on St. Helena Island. It's not an exaggeration. Backed by the tragic history of the last 50 years of dozens of Gullah communities on sea islands, it is disingenuous in every way to tell the people that this is for their benefit. It is solely for the developers' benefit. It is strictly a quid pro quo. The developers just love those development agreements. Let us learn from this irrefutable lessons that history teaches us. This will be a legacy vote, a consequential vote, not only for St. Helena, but for all of Beaufort County. It goes to the heart of who we are as citizens, neighbors, and stewards of our rich history and culture. Thank you for your steadfast support in upholding the CPO and saving this treasured island. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Marquee Fire, pronounce it, please, Marquee for me.
Marquee Fireol.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to begin by apologizing to the Council. I understand that there was a misunderstanding with your personal contact information being given out on flyers that we were advertising, and we want to make sure that you guys know that your safety is definitely one of the biggest things that we care about as partners for the protection of St. Helena. Now, as a private citizen, I would like to say my, I apologize, because I was the one that was distributing those flyers, okay? Accepting personal responsibility is part of being a good neighbor, and that's always been my standard, to be a good neighbor. I want to especially say to you, I never meant to make you feel unsafe or unwell, okay? And if you want to speak later, we can speak in private. The next thing is that the contact information that was used was publicly available on the county's website. This was not information that we had to dig for. This was not information that we went looking to make public. These were, this was an opportunity for us to educate the population of Beaufort County and make sure that they knew how to reach you guys and be able to have a conversation with their elected leaders. This was not meant to be in any way, in any way construed as a threat, or to be harmful in any way. It was to encourage public discussion with our leadership. Now, if someone feels that this was improper, or that it needed to be corrected, there were ways that you could have come and asked us to take care of that, and we would have immediately taken care of it. By going to the newspaper and calling my personal, and I feel that it was my personal character into question, I kind of feel uptight about that, because every one of you guys, I've had personal conversations with you in the past. I've been handing out these flyers because I want other citizens to have personal conversations with you. I want them to explain to you how important these things are, and to let you know that it's not just a few people who have their opinions that are forcing it in a way that you guys have to consider it. I apologize for anything that I've done to make you feel any kind of way, but at the same time, I expect you guys to be leaders. I expect you to have public discourse. I expect you guys to make sure that your constituents have access to you. That if they don't have access to you, how are they supposed to be able to tell you what's important to them? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next on the list is Charles Alford.
Evening. I, I'm assuming you all received my emails this week about the old Beaufort Golf Course. I didn't plan to come up here, but I'd, I started to think about it. I felt strongly enough to find a clean shirt and show up, so here I am. It doesn't seem likely that it's going to make it as a private enterprise. I think it would take an unreasonable level of capitalization to really make it as a profitable enterprise. And, and to be affordable, accessible, the golf course. And to be affordable, accessible as a golf course, it needs to be developed as a municipal. So why, why should we? You know, why bother? I think there, I think there are economic, social, and environmental reasons. Economically, recreation generates revenue. It generates sales tax, and, and it brings people into the area. Having a nicely maintained golf course rather than one that's in disrepair protects property values in that area and helps to protect the tax base. Your colleague, Mr. Passamont, might talk to you a little bit about a golf course called the Enjoy Golf Course, that he's probably familiar with, which started out as a private, became municipal, and for 35 years, hosted a stop on the PGA Tour. Small stop, yes, but it brought millions into a small community, and, and a lot of notoriety, too. Environmental reasons, well-maintained green space is first defense against arboreal pests and diseases, and it's huge, that open space is huge for, for stormwater management, which is a very real problem. If you come down to my house after, after a rain, you'll see floods in our backyards, because over the years, the, the whole stormwater management dynamics have been poorly managed on the golf course, and now they just don't work. Social issues, it provides a big venue for community activities and events. As someone with a considerable background in vocational education, I, I see possibilities there. There's only in South Carolina one associate degree program I'm aware of in golf and sports turf management, and that's up by Myrtle Beach. It'd be an opportunity for Low Country Technical College down here. And finally, youth, the kids. Most kids can't afford to play private courses. It's, I'd hate to think that we've got the next Scotty Scheffley or, or Nelly Corde or Tiger Woods around here, and it's never going to happen, because they just can't afford it. So with that, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Arnold Brown, and after Arnold Brown is Jimmy.
Madam Chair, Mr. Brown was going to say something.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. All right, okay, next is Jimmy Euro, am I pronouncing that correctly?
I wanted to say about this issue, something else.
I'm sorry, say again.
I had something to say about a different issue, not this one.
But it doesn't matter, it's public comment, you can say whatever, as long as it's polite. You want, could you pronounce your last name? I'm sorry.
Yurka, I'm sorry.
Okay, Yurka, okay, thank you.
The last meeting, no one told us about it, and I had put something on the agenda to be voted on for a rezoning, and it was a misunderstanding, I wanted to downzone, not upzone. I was zoned for 76, I could do 76 or 96 units the way it's zoned, I only want to do half of that. And it came before the commission, and no one told us about the meeting. I had asked Rob, but he was on vacation, so we didn't know there was a meeting. So I wanted to see if I could get put back on the agenda to be voted on, because apparently it was a misunderstanding about what it was about.
We, during public comment, we don't answer questions, we just listen, so we, do you have anything else to say about?
That's all it was about.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Next is Felice Lamarcia.
I am here to talk to you about the resolution, item number 21. You intend to propose that Mike Moore works with SC DOT to apply for a large bridge project grant. The proposed resolution expresses the county's support for the full US 278 corridor project. It will fund the original scoped project. If successful, the grant would close the funding gap and enable delivery of the complete corridor improvements. Seems to me, the last meeting I was in where you approved the eastbound bridge, you also told the town of Hilton Head they had no plan for the corridor improvements, so that's news to me. If you vote to go forward with this, in my opinion, you will not have heard our voices or read our letters, and perhaps have forgotten about the 2024 referendum. It wasn't about the 1%. The failure of that referendum wasn't about the penny. It was about trusting this council to spend our money wisely and to work on solutions. Reviving the $500 million monolithic structure to Hilton Head does not show us you are working for solutions. You're still going back to what you want. The citizens have told you what we want. We want a safe way on and off the bridge, and we would like an alternative route. So if you're going to apply for a large bridge grant, please apply for one that gives us a second way off and on the island. So the real point, and the real resolution should be about taking care of us citizens. And when I'm on Hilton Head during the summer, which I am quite a bit, I can't get off very Mr. Reed, Ms. Brown, Mr. McGowan, you represent me on Hilton Head, I really wish that you would listen to us and make a solution that really works for all of us. I'm disappointed in Justin Powell and the SC DOT, and if anyone else is involved with this last-minute Hail Mary, I'm disappointed in you, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nikki Maxey.
My name's Nikki Maxey, I live in Bluffton on Myrtle Island, and this weekend I noticed some signs opposing a sidewalk, which I was in shock about. I was coming down the road, there's a family of five riding their bikes in the middle of the road and have no place to go. I'm just saying I'm in favor of having a nice sidewalk for families to go back and forth from downtown to the landing. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Short and sweet.
It's quick. Um, Mike?
Aragon.
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 Karen.
You should know it by now.
I should, yeah.
Thank you, I'm sorry we come straggling in here late. Not one, but two accidents on 170, so here we are, in the middle of a driving rainstorm, but at any rate, want to take a minute, I'm not going to take the full three, to talk about something that's very near and dear to the property owners at Windmill Harbor. I'm here representing those folks in terms of the, the bridge across Mackey Creek. I realize every one of you are supportive of the bridge being replaced. That bridge is 70 years old. The concern that we have is that in the process of this grant, $120 million grant out there, whether that grant is forthcoming or not forthcoming, that it may engender continued discussion up and down, over and under, left and right, that we've seen for the last four years with regard to the bridges and 278. What we would like to, at this time, propose to the county council and to DOT is less move as expeditiously as possible to replace that bridge. It's got to the point where every time I cross that bridge, it's a little bit scary, it really is. I was on it recently, traffic was not moving, it was bumper to bumper, there were several large trucks right on top of that bridge, and I was just thinking, if something were to happen, this would be not local news, this would be a national disaster. At any rate, do not throw these discussions, whether the $120 million is forthcoming or not, back to the town of Hilton Head Council. Our experience with that group is, they have trouble determining, they, they won't, they can't decide what day of the week it is. So, I mean, I'm just, it, it's got to the point where we just need to move and get it done. I, you know, good luck with the $120 million, I hope that is forthcoming, but whether it is or is not, those bridges, that bridge needs to be replaced. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Kelly?
Council members, county officials, staff members, thanks for the opportunity to talk about the 278 corridor project. My name is Tim Kelly, and I'm a resident of Windmill Harbor. I'm also the president of the POA for Windmill Harbor. As you know, we have been here a lot, a lot of times in the past. We've been big supporters of the project that was approved by the county board and, and also by the, the state, the preferred option. We're concerned now that there could be a delay if you go after the $200 million in grant money and make one big project. Mike was selling it short at 120, but I understood it to be about 200 million. In my prior life, I was heavily involved with government grants on both sides of it. I know the process very well, I know the delays that occur, and we're very concerned about what delays would occur if you went ahead and, and applied for the grant. We would propose that you go ahead and proceed with the plan that's on the table, and then if there's more money available at some other time, then work on the rest of the corridor project from Squire Pope Road to the bridges. But as, as Mike said, our concern is, is the safety of the bridge and the safety of the residents. So if you would proceed with the plan on the table, we'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay. Was there anyone else that was held up on the highway that needs to sign in? I see none. We will conclude public comment. At this time, we're going to go over liaison and committee reports. I have a list of, of the different ones that have met since our last meeting. Ms. Brown, I have you down for Beaufort County Economic Development and Design Review Board. Do you have reports?
And Southern Carolina Lyons as well.
Yes, ma'am, okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. The Design Review Board met last week, and they discussed two car dealerships in the area. I want to give a huge shout-out to our CFO, huge shout-out to our CFO. She was the only CFO in this county, that has worked in this county, that let the Beaufort County Economic Development Corp. know they needed an audit. So I'm really looking forward to the results of that audit when I, when we meet next time with the board. And also, Southern Carolina Lyons, the board meeting was on June 24th. They brought in a new company called CS Instruments. It's in, it's located in Bluffton, it's expected to be online in December. If anyone is interested in joining the company, the email address is info-us@cs-instruments.com, and that's all I have.
All right, Mr. Glover, do you have anything from Beaufort Jasper Sewer Water Authority?
No, madam, I was not able to attend that meeting.
Okay, that's fine, that's good. We have zoning board, I don't think they had anything to report at this time. Who would like to report on the Northern Regional Plan Implementation Committee? I know several of us attended that. Any?
Madam Chair, why don't you go ahead and do that?
Okay, I'll do it. We saw a presentation on the study for the northern regional part of the county as far as transportation goes, a very interesting report. Now that northern Beaufort County has grown enough, we are eligible for some multi-transit grants, possibilities, and they've been having meetings about it, and there's a report that we got that we can send out to the rest of county council members on that. Low Country Council of Governments, we had several members attend that.
I'll take that, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
We attended the Low Country Council of Governments meeting a pleasure a week ago, and they were going through the process of finalizing their budget for the year, and the finalized budget balanced out at $11 million, $11.5 million for the, for the upcoming year. Part of that budget process is the contributions from the four region counties of Jasper, Colton, Hampton, and Beaufort, and the contribution is based upon the, is based upon the, is based upon the population in each, each of the county, and, and 2023, the board of directors at L-CO voted to actually increase the county's contribution to the L-CO budget at a 10 cents, 10 cent increase for, for the future until we get each, each county contributing $1 according to the population among each county. So last year, Beaufort County, we contributed a total of, let me see here, a total of $159,000 to the CO, with a 10 cent increase, that was at 85 cents per person, with an increase of 10 cents for the next coming two-year cycle. We will then be contributing 95 cents to, to the CO per cabinet, and that was put us at contributing roughly about $177,500.
Okay, thank you. I, Tab and I both attended the Beaufort Memorial Hospital Board meeting. They are going to have a list of candidates for the vacancies that they have, and county council will be considering those probably at our August meeting. They have four candidates, they were interviewed, and we have two vacancies on the Beaufort Memorial Hospital Board. They have not hired a new CFO, they have continued the interviews for a new CFO at Beaufort Memorial Hospital, and we'll, we'll probably make an announcement soon regarding that. Any other council members have any liaison or reports? Yes, sir.
This is not a report or, or a, or anything else, but it's actually just a point of order asking the council for consideration. This goes back to the June 23rd last meeting, and we had a zoning map come up for the, the Bluffton area, and I, I should have asked for a deferral, because we needed more information. And Mr. Yurka, who just came up and spoke, who I have actually never met before, this is his first time here, I've never seen him before, but again, has come tonight, I would ask that I make a motion that, that I move the council reconsider agenda, I have 17 on June 23rd, 2025, council agenda, which was an ordinance for a first reading titled 2025/37, an ordinance amending the zoning map for 11 acres located on Burnt Church Road, R 600-039-000, 1552-000, R 600-039-000, 0056-000, R 600-039-000, 02969-000, from T 3 Hamlet Neighborhood, T 3 H N, and T 4 Hamlet Center to T, and T 4 H C to T 3 Neighborhood, T 3 N, and as a public hearing. So again, I'd like to make that motion and ask for someone to, to second that for me.
I'll mention that.
Do you have a second? We'll open it up for discussion.
Let me just finish, the reason I'm doing this, I think that Mr. Yurka did not have an opportunity to speak and actually come forward and give his presentation, we had questions for it. And again, as, as a, as a citizen of the county, in my district, I've learned more about the, the project now, that, that I think it is considered a downzoning, but that's something that we'd have to discuss and have to look at and have to decide once we had all the information. So again, just one, would like to counsel, this council, to give the opportunity to bring this back up at the next council meeting.
Mr. Herbert, is this appropriate time to have that motion made? Mr. Horbert, is this appropriate time to have that motion made?
Just a minute, so I think he's right for the point for bringing that up.
And just for clarification, was that to put it on the next agenda?
Yes, not this agenda, but the next agenda. So it would have proper public notification for everybody.
Any other points of discussion regarding this? Yes.
I just request that when we come back, we get a more complete picture of exactly what's happening, in particular about the area being connected to sewers out there, or if they're going to stay with septic tanks. That would be an important question.
Normally, this would have to wait a year because the vote was 5-5, correct? For reconsideration?
Actually, at least Sarah clarified.
Five to six, so it failed five to six. Okay, I thought it was 5-5. I'm sorry.
The question would be, was Mr. Lawson on the prevailing side, i.e. on the side that voted the motion down? And I believe that he was. And typically, if the council didn't move to reconsider it, then they would have to wait one year before they could resubmit that application unless there's substantial change to the application in some manner, or if they had good cause and brought it before council and council waived that one-year period, which is within the prerogative of council pursuant to Community Development Code. There are four criteria listed in Community Development Code, and you'd have to meet one of those criteria to convince you to waive that. But because there's a motion to reconsider, council has to deem, is it a proper motion before council? And Roberts' rules is the rule that will dictate whether or not it's proper for this meeting or not. And Roberts' rule says that a member on the prevailing side can move to reconsider a matter that was voted on at the same meeting or the next legislative day. Now, a lot of councils would consider the next legislative day to be the following day if it's a multiple-day meeting. Our council doesn't have multiple-day meetings unless it's a retreat or a workshop where you've gone away somewhere. This is the next legislative day, and there's precedent for doing it at the next legislative day, which this would fall in that category. So councils within its purview to determine that this is the next legislative day, so it's proper, but that's a decision that council will have to make on its interpretation of Roberts' rule.
Is it proper to make the motion to reconsider?
Well, it's proper to make the motion reconsider. The question is, is it timely? And it's going to all depend upon the interpretation of the next legislative day pursuant to Roberts' rule.
Any questions of Mr. Horbert?
Madam Chair, a motion reconsider in this nature would be a two-thirds vote, correct?
It would require a majority vote, is what it would require. Just a simple majority, I believe.
I have a comment. I think your analysis with regard to the next legislative day makes sense, considering we only have them intermittently, and we had one where this occurred, and this is the next one, even though there's some distance between the two.
Typically, a motion to reconsider comes about when new information is learned or gleaned. And in this case, Mr. Lawson has conveyed that there is additional information that multiple council members wanted to know that couldn't be answered at that time, and unfortunately, the applicant wasn't at that meeting to provide some of the information. And he has indicated that he wasn't aware that it was being heard at that meeting. I'm not sure how that could happen, but unfortunately, if that's true, that should carry some weight.
I'd just like to make a comment. I think it's incumbent on the owner of the property to know that it was going to be on the agenda because the agenda is published, and it is public, and he had requested the rezoning. So I will not vote for this motion because of that. I think it sets a dangerous precedent that an owner can say that he did not know about the meeting, but it was published, a meeting, and he did request the rezoning. That's my opinion. Okay. Any other comments before we take a vote? We'll do a roll call vote.
I have one, just one question. I think there was some confusion during the discussion at the last meeting with regard to whether it was an upzone or a downzone, and I think that may have, that may have had some weight in the way the voting was taken that night. So we're clear now that it's not an upzone request.
Yes, and I will admit that, as I recall, staff had some difficulty clearly answering that question for council.
If we, if a person votes yes, does that mean they're just voting to reconsider it?
All you're voting is whether or not to bring it back to the next council meeting for council to reconsider it.
Okay, yes.
That's all you're voting. You're not voting to approve the zoning map amendment or to disapprove it, just to discuss it again and reconsider it.
I will make one more comment. In my years of experience, it's one of the few times I've ever seen a rezoning where the owner was not present at the meeting. It is, it is the responsibility of the owner or his representative to be at the meeting, in my opinion, if you're requesting a rezoning. So again, I will vote no, not to reconsider. All right. Is there any other comments or statements? Yes. Someone else?
I think it was Mr. Dawson.
Councilman Dawson? Okay.
No, I, I made a comment. I'm ready to vote.
We're going to do a roll call vote, please. All right. Is everyone clear on what the vote is about?
Is that it comes forward at the next meeting?
Yes. A vote yes would have it come forward at the next meeting, which would be August?
11th.
Okay, correct.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Passamet?
Yes.
Councilmember McAllen?
Yes.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Councilmember Dawson? Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Hello.
The motion passes.
Moving along, the next item on, are there any other, besides, anyone else have any other liaison reports? No? All right. Next item is number nine, discussion to authorize the county administrator to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Jasper County to provide assistance for animal control intake and sheltering of animals from Jasper County. Fiscal impact, Beaufort County will document personnel, capital, and animal care costs associated with caring for Jasper County animals. And Jasper County will reimburse Beaufort County or directly cover the cost of animal, for their animals and received and cared for by Beaufort County. Our administrator will come forward? I think we have some guests from Jasper County here too, including the chairman, John Kemp, and perhaps others.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to offer that as a motion, just to put it on the floor. And then we have discussion.
Is that, okay. That's appropriate?
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion by Councilman Glover and a second by Councilman Reitz. Okay.
Thank you. How are you this evening?
Good.
So yes, before I get started, I would like to recognize Jasper County Council Chairman John Kemp is in the room, Jasper County Administrator Andy Foljam, Jasper County's Attorney David Tetter, also Jasper County Fire Chief Russell Wells, as well as Beaufort County Animal Services Director Tallulah Price? Yes, sorry. I always call her Tallulah. I can't help it. And Hilton Head Humane Director Franny Gefhalter is here as well, all in support of this request. So the request before you today is requesting you to authorize the county administrator to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Jasper County. This relates to a conversation we had late last week between our county administrator, Mr. Moore, and Jasper County Administrator Andy Foljam. In case there is a need that Beaufort County Animal Services may need to step in and assist Jasper County with intake of animals in Jasper County and help with sheltering of Jasper County animals, we'd like to be in the position that we have an intergovernmental agreement that will allow us to do that if those steps are necessary. Beaufort County Animal Services and our partners are prepared and capable of stepping in to assist if that becomes necessary. As I said, I've got a whole list of people here that are prepared to support and answer any questions you might have.
Sir, Councilman Reitz?
Just very quickly, Ms. Tallulah and Ms. Franny, are you really for this? I, we appreciate that and appreciate you, everybody being here. So this is going to be a great partnership. It's written. You guys are awesome. We thank you for what you're doing. We appreciate it.
Right now, the intent is for us to work together to help solve problems amongst our two counties, and then we can continue to work together to resolve more problems in the future.
Okay. Any other questions?
Madam Chairman, I would just love to hear from Jasper County. They're here, and they've been here since 6 o'clock, so.
So Mr. Foljam had to take a flight this morning, and he got back here just in time. He said he's a little weary, but he made it for this meeting.
That's why it's so important. I mean, he did all that.
I've been sitting for 6 o'clock. Takes a while.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Good to see everyone. As has been mentioned, Chairman Mr. Kemp is here, and also another council member, Mr. Chris Van Geesen, who's been working on this issue for quite some time.
Yes.
In Jasper County, the Sheriff's Department provides the animal control, and we have traditionally contracted with a nonprofit agency to handle the animal sheltering. We are in the throes of negotiating with that group. Again, it is a difficult time for us, and we want to be prepared to have an M O U with Beaufort County to assist us. We have enjoyed the opportunity to work with the staff. They've been very helpful, knowledgeable, and cooperative and professional. We're just very pleased, and we thank Mr. Moore and his team for that effort.
Mr. Kemp?
Yes.
Chairman Kemp?
I think this would be a perfect time for shared services. Jasper County, we're going to stress shared services within the county, and I think we have to look at outside the county. There's a lot of things that the taxpayers can pay and we can support, or you can support us, and I wish you would, appreciate you approving this.
Yeah. Guys, this has been a big issue for Jasper County, and I think you guys were close to a deal a year ago or so, from what I understand. I'm new to the council this year, but as you all know, we're a growing county, and we need help, and we want to do it professionally, and I think it's time for us to step up and take control. Meeting with Tallulah and Franny has been fantastic for us. If they can teach us and show us the way, I think it'll be an awesome thing for Jasper County. So really appreciate it.
I had a question. It's my understanding this would be a temporary measure, M O A type arrangement?
Yes, we'll be looking for a motion for you to authorize the administrator to negotiate and execute a short-term temporary M O A. And by short-term temporary, we mean that it would start with one year with the option to renew at the pleasure of either council.
Any questions?
I just want to thank you all for being here. We appreciate it. Very nice.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members?
That was part of my motion, and I'm glad to, that we are able to do and work with you, and I think there are probably going to be other opportunities for us to work together in the future, so.
I hope so.
I hope so, too.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Okay. As stated by Mr. Horbert, do we have a motion to that?
In a second.
In a second?
Right.
You want to restate them?
Oh, whatever motion you read earlier, which would include?
Looking for a motion for the council to authorize the county administrator to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Jasper County for the provision of providing animal services on a short-term basis of one year with an option to renew it if necessary.
Okay. The only difference is the inclusion of temporary for one year, so.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Can we have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please by show of hands, a vote. That is unanimous. Mr. Dawson, are you on?
I'm going to, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a landmark decision, really.
Okay. Thank you all.
First time we'll be sharing services. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, we have a few items on our consent agenda. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, a move that we approve the consent agenda?
I'll second that.
A second? Any discussion? All in favor by show of hands? An aye? Okay, the consent agenda is approved. All right, now, we get into ordinances for third reading. Number 11 is 2025, since Tab's not here, I'll be doing these. 2025/30, an ordinance establishing a formalization process for Beaufort County historically maintained roads known as legacy roads and execution of any and all associated instruments of conveyance to the county. This went to Public Facilities on May 19th, a vote of 9 to 0, a vote at first reading in public hearing, June 9th, 2025, 10 to 0, and a vote at second reading on June 23rd, 2025, 11 to 0. Motion, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve, and it is up on the screen, to approve ordinance 2025/30.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the motion as read and shown on the screen above.
Do we have a second?
A second.
And a second by Councilman Glover. All in favor by show of hands? An aye?
Yes.
And this is approved. All right. 2025/31, an ordinance authorizing the county administrator to execute any and all necessary documents for conveyance of right-of-way known as Orange Court, Prince William Drive, and Indigo Woods Court to the town of Port Royal. This went to Public Facilities Committee, May 19th, with a vote of 9 to 0, and it was voted at first reading and public hearing on June 9th, 2025, 10 to 0, and a vote at second reading on June 23rd, 2025, 11 to 0. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the motion as read and as shown on the screen above.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Councilman Larson. All in favor by show of hands? And it is approved unanimously. 2025/32, an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of right-of-way known as 16th Street Extension and Related Drainage Easement to the town of Port Royal. A vote at Public Facilities on May 13th, 2025, was 9 to 0. The vote at first reading and public hearing on June 9th, 2025, was 10 to 0. The vote at second reading on June 23rd, 2025, was 11 to 0. Do we have a motion to approve? What's on the screen?
Our motion.
We have a motion by Councilman Brown. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second by Councilman Glover. All in favor?
Aye.
By show of hands?
Yes.
Yes, okay. It is approved unanimously. 2025/33 is an ordinance amending Chapter 99 Stormwater Management, Article 2 Stormwater Management Utility, Section 101, Findings of Facts, 106 Definitions, and 109 Exemptions of the Port Royal County Code of Ordinances. The vote at Public Facilities on May 19th was 9 to 0. The vote at first reading and public hearing on June 9th was 10 to 0. The vote at second reading on June 23rd, 2025, was 11 to 0. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I will gladly and proudly make that motion to move to approve as read on the screen, as read and shown on the screen above.
I'll second that.
A second by Tom Reitz. This clears up many years of confusion.
Madame Chair, I believe.
And thank you, David. And also, did I say Port Royal? I'm sorry.
Town of Port Royal, yeah.
The one before it was the town of Port Royal. This one is 2025/33, which is Beaufort County. You're correct. Do I need to read it again? Okay. After many years of confusion, thank you, David, and Councilman Horbert, and the people at the air station for getting this straightened out. The next one is 2025, oh, did we take the vote?
We got to call a vote on it.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous.
Okay.
All right. 2025/34 is an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a drainage easement located at 15 Suzanne Avenue on Pawke Island in Beaufort County, South Carolina. The vote at Public Facilities was, on May 19th, was 9 to 0. The vote at first reading and public hearing on June 9th was 10 to 0. The vote at second reading on June 23rd, 2025, was 11 to 0. Do we have a motion to approve this ordinance, 2025/34? Do we have a motion to approve this ordinance, 2025/34?
Our motion.
We have a motion by Councilman Brown. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Councilman Dawson. This is in his district, all in favor by show of hands? All right?
Yes.
And it is unanimous. Now we have some ordinances for second reading. We have 2025/36, an ordinance amending Chapter 14 Animals, Article 2 Animal Control, Section 14-27, Definitions, Section 14-28, County Pet License, Section 14-30, Declaration of Restricted Dog, Appeal of Breed Determination, Section 14-32 Dangerous Animals, Section 14-34 Nuisance Pets or Livestock, Section 14-35 Animal Cruelty and Neglect, Section 14-43 Livestock, Section 14-45 Rabies Control Act, Sections 14-47 Dangerous Animals Not to Go Unconfined on Premises or Off Premises Unless Safely Restrained in Section 1448 Enforcement and Penalties of the Beaufort County Code of Ordinances. The vote at Community Services on June 2nd was seven to zero. The vote on first reading and public hearing on June 23rd was 2025, 11 to zero. This is a lot of complex changes that were, included livestock and nuisance animals. I need to entertain a motion to approve these changes for 2025/36.
I'll, I'll second that.
We have the motion by Councilman McKellen and a second by Councilman Bartholomew. Do we have any questions? Because this has been through a lot of changes.
I believe so and there are some additional changes that came through that we need to finalize as well.
So two things I want to mention during the last meeting, Mr. Bartholomew pointed out as Scrivener's error, so we made that correction. I, I did go through each of the changing, changes in the ordinance during the committee meeting and at first reading. At second, or at first reading, there was some question in the dangerous dog section. Dylan, our deputy county attorney, could not be here that meeting, but he is here tonight. So if you have some questions or concerns in that section, Dylan is happy to answer those questions for you and represent any of those changes.
I had a question about, did you have a question?
Go ahead.
Of, I think if we could, the grace, going back, looking back at the, a more, this path of appeal, can you explain that a little bit?
Yes, Madam Chair, and thank you for.
For dangerous dog?
Yes, so that's under Section 1432. The look-back period allows someone whose dog has previously been determined to be dangerous under the ordinance, after a year has passed since that determination, to ask for reassessment. The way that it is currently written in the proposed amended ordinance is that if your dog was classified a Level 1 or Level 2, which are the lower level of a dangerous animal, you can do that once per year and you have that initial determination reviewed by a Beaufort County Animal Services Officer and then potentially by the magistrate court if you disagreed with their decision. For a Level 3 dog, that would be the ability to do so after five years, because that is the most serious, and that would automatically go to the magistrate court for determination. We have discussed, and I believe there may be a motion to add a retroactivity period that would be unlimited and allow for any dog owner who has previously had a dog determined to be dangerous to appeal that determination after one year.
That's not in the current ordinance?
Currently it is not, the current language does not make the ordinance retroactive. It is something that we have discussed and, and again, it could be subject to a motion by the council.
Personally, I would not like to see it retroactive, but I like the different levels of 1, 2, and 3. I think that is, and as a former magistrate, Mr. McKellen may have a comment about that too.
Yeah, I think the positive aspects of this make it much less difficult, I hate to use the word easier, for a judge to deal with the different levels, particularly as it relates to the dangerous animals, because that was always fraught with difficulty with regard to the level of danger and the confinement issues and a variety of other things that always made it very emotional and very difficult to deal with. So I would support this and recommend you continue to think about future changes that may improve it even further.
Yes, sir, and if I may, one thing that we wanted to allow the courts that you yourself would recognize is some more discretion in this, because too often it is a black and white determination.
They didn't have a lot of flexibility. I think this gives that, so it's, it's a, it's a very, it's a very positive move.
Any other comments?
Actually, just another question. So rather, I know we had talked kind of off the record about the amendments here and trying to, not necessarily make it retroactive, but that one-year review period would be applicable to anybody, you know, so they could come forward and have that determination, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that's, that's reflected in this?
Right now though.
Say, say that again?
That's not in there. You recall, you wanted to amend it to make it retroactive, like three years or 10 years, different periods last year. We said, no, we would come back with different language for you and we've drafted that language for you, but you would have to make that motion to amend to add that language.
But you still have, in the current version, you can appeal it.
Perspective going forward, you've got that flexibility. If you want to give that flexibility to the dogs that have been adjudged dangerous prior to adopting that here tonight, you need to amend the amendment to make it retroactive to allow them to, after one-year period, appeal for reconsideration to the magistrate.
You considering coming back with that amendment for us to consider?
We've drafted the language and presented it to, I think, Councilman Bartholomew. Did you send it to Councilman McKellen as well?
Councilman McKellen, but I can do so.
I just don't know if we're equipped to deal with it tonight, but it doesn't mean we can't do it very quickly going forward.
We'd have to start from scratch and bring it forth through the committee and three readings again. If you do it tonight, you've got it going forward.
Yeah, but I don't know if everybody's very clear on what we're talking about. That's my only point.
I can make it very, well, Dylan can make it clear real quick.
The proposed language that, that was sent simply adds to Section 1431D, 1432D, and it adds language stating that any owner whose animal has previously been determined under the ordinance shall be permitted to move for reconsideration after one year of the date of that determination, and that's prior to the date of enactment, which we were suspecting would be August the 11th, but whatever effective date that council may so choose.
The language included in, in the proposal to indicate what the reasons would be that a person could make that appeal retroactively? In other words, what are the conditions that have to exist? Is there any discussion of that available for us to consider?
It is, it is, as the language was, was just stated, it is only, it is for any reason, if your dog has been determined to be dangerous under our ordinance previously, you can move for reconsideration under this new ordinance.
That would go to animal control and then to the magistrate or for a different level directly to the magistrate, so essentially you're readjuicing the matter.
Readjuicing the, we would assign a level, the magistrate judge would assign a level and would decide essentially whether or not that classification of dangerous was to remain.
But you'd have to review the entire situation and look at, to see if the animal has gone off parole or probation, I suspect.
Yes, sir, I think it would be a two-step process.
And, and I believe this would take out the, not the amendment, but I think y'all took it out already, the animal control reviewing that and just go directly to magistrate?
That is, that is still in there as well in the current version, so that would could be the subject of another amendment. That was the second part of the language. That would, the way it is currently set up, if you are a Level 1 or Level 2, which are the lower levels of dangerousness under this ordinance, you would be able to petition the animal services officer for reassessment and if the animal services officer agreed that the declassification should be removed, then he or she could do so unilaterally. If the animal services officer determined that the determination should remain, then the dog owner could have the ability to appeal that determination to a magistrate judge, except for in the case of a Level 3 animal where it's once per, every five years and it goes straight to the magistrate court.
The real question I have is, has, are the professionals who are engaged in this at animal control, and I don't know if anybody asked any questions of the magistrates or if it would even be appropriate, is there anybody who is opposed to this going forward or is everybody in agreement it's a good idea?
I have not heard opposition from those I have spoken with. I'll tell you, I work closely with our animal services officers and I have spoken with the magistrate bench, just generally speaking about any, any feedback they may have. What I would say is that there, there is some question about the, whether the animal services officer should make that determination for a Level 1 or 2 animal or if it should always go to the magistrate court, and that is a subject of another potential amendment that we may, or a motion that we may.
Yeah, but that really, that, you know, if it's a Level 1 or 2 and the animal control officer and, and the owner doesn't like it, they can always go to the magistrate and appeal it, so eventually it's going to get there anyway, so, if it needs to. The, the levels of dangerous dogs that fall under this category, that whole section was inspired by the director of animal services in order to offer residents or owners of these animals some. Relief, because you're putting a dog in a penitentiary actually for a period of time based upon the severity, lack of, that really didn't matter, it was just a matter of whether it became a dangerous dog. And there were a lot of mitigating circumstances with that. I mean, I could give you one right here, but I wouldn't trouble everyone with it. So it's some, some level of relief there. I think it's very appropriate.
Well, no.
The only reservation that we heard was concern about opening a can of worms and being overwhelmed by the dogs that have been determined dangerous already, but that's something that, as a government, you have to deal with.
Is there a big number? I don't, I didn't realize that.
So I can, I prosecute these cases for the civil cases in animal court, in magistrate court, and I would say we have less than five, I would say, per month, as far as how many have gotten determined to be dangerous over the past year, on average, perhaps one or two a month. So there, there would be a significant number. We may have to set some, to work with the courts to set a special term, but I have also held some matters in abeyance pending the new ordinance to allow the owners to.
And I guess the old ones, the dogs reached their expiration date, so it's one of those things.
There is that factor as well, yes, sir.
Madam Chair, if, if I may make a motion to amend in this time, I'd make a motion to amend Section 1432D to add the following sentence, "An owner of a dog that was determined to be a dangerous dog by the magistrate prior to August 11th, 2025, may petition the magistrate court for reassessment of the animal after one year of the date of the determination."
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second to amend? This is amendment.
I'll second that.
A second by Councilman McKellen. So we have to vote on this amendment first, correct?
Yes.
All right, all in favor of the.
Madam Chairman, look.
You want discussion?
Yeah, yeah. Who determines the severity of the dog? Is that by officer or, and the question I have is that if, if I have a dog in my yard that's protecting my yard and you came up to my yard and shouldn't be there, and he aggressively protected my yard, because he may have bitten somebody, is he then declare a Level 1, 2, or 3?
So.
Now, if you, if you move down the road to a neighbor's yard, he's not going to bother you, but if you come into my yard, he's going to protect my yard and that's why I feed him, but go ahead, tell me.
Yes, sir. The way the ordinance is written, if that, if such a bite that you described occurred on your property, the dog would not be dangerous under our ordinance.
Thank you.
It has to be off property, almost, almost exclusively.
You clarify that? I can support the motion going forward. Thank you.
I'm going to provide a yes.
Any other questions regarding this amendment?
Yes.
Oh, yes, Councilman.
The date that's been posted in the amendment, is that a valid date or should it be a date based upon the actual approval of the ordinance?
That's the date the ordinance will be approved.
Okay.
Does that clarify? Any other questions on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment signify by raising your hand or saying aye?
Aye.
All right, that is unanimous. All right, let's go back to the original motion.
Madam, I may have, sorry, I may have one more motion to amend, but I wanted to ask Dylan real quick, actually I lost the, I did something on my computer here and lost it, but do you think in your expertise in handling this, do you think it's better to have that Level 1, Level 2 as it's written to go through the animal services or should we put everything in the magistrate court?
In my experience and with my county, county attorney hat on here, I worry about the liability angle if there is, if an animal services officer were to determine that the animal were no longer dangerous and to do, to do that unilaterally without it coming through a magistrate court and having a court order, because at that point you have an animal services officer that has taken an action that is technically in opposition to a court order and that could, it could arguably lead to a liability section. So I lean towards the amendment that, that puts it in magistrate court all the time. In practice, yes, we, we could instruct the animal services officers to end up in magistrate court if they're, if it's a close case, but the way the ordinance is, I would favor amending the ordinance in the way that we have proposed.
Do you happen to have a written breakdown of what you sent me earlier?
I do, on my, I can get it on my.
Same on my computer as well?
Yes, if done. It is, so it was, it was simply to, yes.
Is it the Second Amendment? Okay.
Oh, so yes, it was also to subsection D, so it was 1432D and there were some strike-throughs there, so it would, we would remove the language stating that the animal services officer determines that the classification and restrictions should stand. We would strike through that and just leave the last language of the determination to the magistrate court in the middle, and then we would consistently do that. There was one other place where that was referenced, but yes, we would just remove all references to the animal services officer revisiting that classification unilaterally within subsection D.
Madam Chair, if I may, offer another motion to amend Section 1432D by removing all mention of the animal service officer being able to make the determination or review and placing that in the magistrate court. This would also strike the sentence, "If after a requested review of a dog classified as Level 1 or Level 2, the animal services officer determines that the classification and restrictions should stand, the owner may appeal the determination to the magistrate court." That language would, would be removed and also remove the section in here, which is comprised of the animal services officer's determination if unappealed or the magistrate court's order if appealed. So completely moving that and the previous sentence as described and removing the other, the first part of the sentence, animal service officer and leaving, leaving the magistrate court.
Okay.
Being the applicable party. I hope that's clear enough in the.
And they'll give you a clean version.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a, a amendment? Do we have a second to that amendment?
Yeah, Madam Chairman, could, could the author of the motion kind of explain exactly what he's doing?
Yeah, sorry, I, I have the benefit of having a written format here, so I apologize. I was trying to make it clear, but essentially what we had just, what we just discussed, rather than the animal control officer being able to make that determination of a previously determined dangerous animal, the, the owner of that dog would have to petition the court and have it be heard in the magistrate court. So instead of it being a staff-level decision, it would be heard at the magistrate court and allow due process to go on that route to the magistrate court.
Regardless of the Level 1.
Yeah, regardless of the Level, it would just, everything would go to the magistrate court via petition.
That deals with the liability, that deals with the liability you talked about.
We believe so, yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
And that's, that's essentially it, yes, sir.
Okay, I want to make sure, okay.
Yes, sir, no.
We have a motion, an amendment. Do we have a second to?
I'll second that.
A second by Councilman McKellen. Any other questions regarding this amendment? Yes, do we have, did you have some?
No, I seconded, that's fine.
Oh, well, I think Councilman McKellen beat you to it.
All right, that's all right. He's pretty quick.
All right, any other, any other questions or discussion regarding this amendment? All in favor by show of hands? All right, so this amendment passes. Now we're back to the original.
Same motion.
Same motion as amended, it's been amended twice, it's been amended twice.
Let's have a comment. I mean, I'm, I'm going to vote for this, but it, there is the portion of this that makes me very uncomfortable, especially when you start talking about farmers who have multiple cattle, you know, 100 head of cattle or 500 chickens or 20 pigs, that, that we put a burden on them if there is, and again, we have in there about the extenuating circumstances and things like that. However, with as many hurricanes as we get and evacuations that we get, I hope that we are very lenient when it comes to, you know, farmers and what they've got and the, the animals they have. I mean, they don't raise animals because they hate them, they raise them because they love them, so it's not like they're trying to abandon them, so again, this, this does not cover that, because obviously each offense is, is one livestock. So you're talking, if someone has 100 head of cattle and they leave them, they could be fined 100 times for each, each, or if they have, it says invertebrate or vertebrate, so that means chickens, if they have 100 chickens, they leave the chickens behind, they could be fined. So that's the only thing that is not spelled out, I can't think of any. not spelled out, I can't think of any language that I want to change, but again, that's the only thing that really bothers me with, with this ordinance.
Yes, sir, we worked very closely with representatives from Clemson University and the Farm Bureau. We had, we held a stakeholders meeting and brought them in the room before this ever came forward to council, and the section you're talking about is abandonment, and that section previously was difficult for farmers with large amounts of cattle or livestock of any kind to, to manage. So we addressed that directly with, with those members of the public and made sure that the language is appropriate and they agreed to it before it ever came forward to committee. They were quite pleased with the language they have, and of course, our Animal Services are always more than willing to work along with our residents to support them in any way they need.
Any other comments or questions?
Just to follow up, and John, don't, because there, the Farm Bureau basically brought that forward, and I think both Vice Chairman and the Chairman attended the Farm Bureau banquet when that was expressed to them over the last couple of years, and they were at the meeting, and they, they sort of endorse moving forward, and I think we were trying to work with the Farm Bureau and the Sheriff Department to allow them some special privilege of getting back in after disasters to make sure that they can actually...
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
That was one, one of the options we were looking at, was working with, with the Sheriff's Office and seeing if we could essentially procure some reentry passes for them. That did not work for us, but we did find an alternative that would allow them, allow those members of the public with large numbers of animals to work alongside with our large animal rescue, and should they become members of that and have effectively a plan, then they would also have some of that reentry capability that comes along with membership to that organization. So we found a way to, to continue to work with them. Again, we, we met with the stakeholders group in order to find a compromise that was efficient for them as well as Beaufort County and ultimately protects the animals in the best way possible.
Right, and, and, and the key was basically not being able to evacuate all those animals, except for that prized bull.
That bull.
But knowing that there is a procedure that as long as you don't enclose them, they have the freedom to, to get around, animals have a way of, of protecting themselves, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions regarding the original motion with the two amendments?
Madam Chair, I just want to thank you all for all the hard work you put into it and the staff for doing all this work, I really do appreciate it.
I would like to add my thanks, this has been going on for a long time, and I think we have a, a very excellent response back to people like Farm Bureau and others. This ordinance will probably be adopted by the municipalities too, is what I think I remember you saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Are the amendments?
Yes, it, some of the municipalities, really kind of depends on the way that they adopted it previously, however, it is up to those municipalities to continue to adopt that, and we have reached out to the municipalities, I, I've actually got a, a message from the City of Beaufort a few minutes ago, I told them I'd call them in the morning, and so we'll have those discussions and make sure that if the municipality wants to do presentations or come and talk some more, we'll do those things for them as well.
I think many of us in municipalities have received complaints about pests of roosters, particularly in the urban environment or suburban environment, and this addresses it in a, in a very excellent way too, so.
Thank you.
It gives them an avenue.
Our county attorney and I have visited a home looking for a, a rooster ourselves. We sure have.
All right.
That was in the, in the city, right?
It was in the city.
It's in the city.
Okay, Nazi, okay.
It was a pretty chicken, I couldn't tell if it was a male or female, but, you know.
Not going there, okay. I grew up on farmer numbers. All right, so, all in favor of this, with the two amendments, by show of hands?
Aye.
Aye, okay, it is unanimous. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Dylan.
Thanks, John.
Moving on to number 17, this is 2025-39, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of Holly Hill Road Utility Drainage, Signage and Access Esement Agreement for Holly Hill Road located in Bluffton Township off of New Riverside Road. This is a public hearing, the vote at Public Facilities was June 16th, 2025, 8 to 0. The vote at first reading was June 23rd, 2025, 11 0. So it's now open for a public hearing, are there any comments?
We need a motion.
We need a motion before we do the public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Larson and a second by Councilman Brown, all in favor? No, we have the public hearing first, that's right, so now it is open for public hearing. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed, and at this time we'll take a vote on the motion. All in favor by show of hands?
Aye.
All right, and that passes unanimously. Next is number 18, 2025/40, an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of an undeveloped portion of Coffin Bluff Road located off Frit Point Road on St. Helena Island Road. The vote at Public Facilities on June 16th was 8 to nothing, the vote at first reading on June 23rd was 11 to 0. I need a motion to, for this ordinance, and a second, please?
I motion, Madam Chairman.
Then I'll, I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilman Glover and a second by Councilman Bartholomew. At this time, we'll open it up for a public hearing, do we have any comments or, or any statements? All right, hearing none, the public hearing is closed.
Madam Chairman...
Discussion, comments?
Several years ago, in this area, there has been a lot of drainage problem, and at the last meeting when this was brought forward, our engineer basically said this would not cause any drainage problem, so I'm going to support this motion.
Do we have any other questions, comments? All right, we have a motion and a second for this resolution, all in favor by, what, I'm sorry, what?
It's a motion.
It's a motion, we had a motion.
It's an ordinance or a resolution?
It's a resolution, yeah. No, it's an ordinance, did I say resolution?
An ordinance, okay, yeah.
Keep me straight.
Okay, thank you.
I'm looking ahead to the resolutions, okay.
I can't hear.
All right, this is an ordinance, and we had a motion and a second, all in favor by, signified by raising your hand, and that is unanimous, it passes. All right, next, number 19, is 2025/45, a resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into a memorandum of agreement with other governmental agencies for the repair and maintenance of vehicles, equipment, and associated peripheral devices. This went to the Finance Committee and Economic Development on June 23rd, 2025, and it was 7 to 0. We have a motion for Resolution 2025/45, which is on the screen.
Madam Chairman, our motion, I'll second it, Madam Chairman.
All right, motion by Councilman Passment, second by Councilman Glover. Any discussion regarding this? Everyone understand what we're entering into?
Um, yeah.
Yeah, shared services, like we talked about. All right, all in favor?
Yeah, this would be sheriff as, as well as all the municipalities, right?
I'd like the administrator to answer that.
It is the other municipalities. We already work, you know, service all the sheriff's vehicles as part of a county, but this would allow for other municipalities.
Any other questions?
And agencies.
And agencies, there's some agencies listed too, I think even, all right. All in favor, signify by raising your hand, and that is unanimous, all right. Another resolution, 2025-46, resolution to refine and further prioritize the project list and scopes within the three categories of the 2018 One-Cent Transportation Sales Tax Program, physical impact, no additional revenue is required, all projects outlined in the resolution will be funded using the 146.5 million collected from the 2018 One-Cent Sales Tax Program. I hope everyone had an opportunity to read this, are there, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Okay, I think I heard...
Lou second.
Okay, I heard Councilman Passment, and then a second by Councilman McAllen, any discussion?
I just want to make sure this version does not have the Middle Road, I don't see it on here, is that accurate?
That's correct, Middle Road was removed, and we have Broad River Road that's in here now.
Any other questions?
Second.
Oh, Councilman Dawson.
No, Jared.
Oh, Jared's on, okay.
Jared just popped on if there's any questions.
If anybody has any questions for Jared, while he's on vacation, I think.
He got back early, so, we put him online.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions for Mr. Frelix? All right, seeing none, any other discussion?
Well, actually, Madam Chair, I apologize if I may, Chair, I do have one other question, what's going to happen with the, since the Sunset Miller isn't reduced in scope, what's going to happen with the funds that are in that, I guess, that, that account for those, for that project?
Yeah, so that was the whole lays out, when we repatch lays out all together, we, we used the amount of funding going for the Sunset Miller to appropriately address the refined improvements.
Okay, all right, thank you. Say, say again?
Again, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor by show of hands or vocal in favor? It is unanimous for that resolution. Next is Resolution 21, 2025...
Madam Chairman, before, before you go any further, could I ask, since he's on the, the telephone, Sir Jared, can he speak to a timetable on this, all these changes, all this, moving these, these projects forward? As we get ready to entertain the, another One-Cent Sale Tax, a lot of the citizens were saying, we didn't, we haven't seen anything completed, is there any, can he speak to that, whether some of these projects will at least be completed within a year's time?
Yeah, I can definitely speak to that.
Thank you, sir.
So what we've done with this resolution is refine the project, a lot of these projects that are in this newer... Some of them are already started right away, and some of the pathways... So to answer your question, a large percentage of these will be under construction in the next few years, all of them will be very near to at least be...
So are you saying after the possible...
They'll all be constructed ahead of...
The 26th.
...referendum, but all of them will be either completed under construction or very near to go into out construction.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about, for Jared?
The caveat, that is, of course, the bridge hasn't...
All right.
Actually, Madam Chair, one quick question, Jared, I've been, received a few, a few emails and phone calls from individuals with the impact Middle Road and the Sunset Miller area, one was from an attorney that was trying to buy the right-ofways from people, which I don't think was actually associated with the county, but then there was another group that was trying to acquire the right-ofways, and people were worried about it being a scam. Is there better communication that we can have? They didn't really, they were concerned about the tactic and the approach for the right-ofway acquisition.
So we have not moved forward with any right-ofway inspections on Sunset Miller, or getting approached for right-ofway from attorneys, or that is not the county. Sometimes what we've seen on other projects is when there's a project known that's coming down a certain road, affected, so that they can help negotiate. For sure, is, we have not done any right-ofway acquisition work on this, so those are, those are not county, so we're not reaching out if anybody has had those happen.
Thank you.
I, I think, I think that's a good comment, I, I don't know what can be done about it, but there's, there's a lot of scam happening, and I, I agree with Dr., I mean, Doctor, because there, there have been people who've been approached to purchase right-ofways, and they're, they're not nice. So is there any way that we could actually communicate with the public somehow to say, you know, if we did any right-ofway, check the county webpage or something, so people can know that it's not the county?
Yes, and some roads are under right-ofway acquisition.
Yes.
And so we have that identified on our Beaufort County Penny website, where the status of the project is, so if it does not say right-ofway acquisition, we are definitively not... Taken tonight, these are the only roads that will have right-ofway, so if it's in the project list, that is obviously not part of the county doing that type of work.
Are there any professional people that we can identify to say...
The only professionals that are on behalf of the county, so we have a program manager who understands our design, that are on... That is the agent on behalf of the county, that is what they need to know here, that are you an agent of the county, if show, let me confirm that, if, if there's a question by a public citizen who are agents. Also know on right-ofway acquisition overall, so we are required to go through an appraisal process where... Project, we delineate the impact cities, land, and property owner, and then we have to do an appraisal, or if they don't agree, we negotiate, and then if they can't... It's the right-ofway process in a nutshell.
The, the only advice I could give that person at the time was that if somebody's aggressively trying to get you to do something, just don't do it, but there are a lot of folks out there that, that are illegally doing things that are not appropriate and professional, so, yeah, I hate to see people getting taken, because ultimately they're going to blame counsel, whether we like it or not, thank you.
Okay, we're on item number 21, it is five minutes to eight.
Madam Chair, at this time I'd make a motion to extend our meeting beyond the 8 o'clock timeframe.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Bartholomew, do we have a second to extend beyond 8 o'clock?
I second, Madam Chairman, since I'm talking too much.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Glover. All in favor of extending past 8 o'clock?
Okay.
All right, well, it's unanimous, well, I don't think Councilman Passment voted for it, he did not vote for it, all right.
And he's who?
All right, Councilman 21, we are, I mean, we are on item 21, 2025/47, is a resolution in support of US 278 Project and Authorization for the County Administrator to apply for a large bridge project grant through the Federal Highway Administration's Bridge Investment Program, or BIP. Physical impact, if awarded, the federal grant would fully fund the remaining costs of the originally scoped project, any potential cost overruns would follow the previous agreed-upon 70/30 prorata cost-sharing structure between the county and South Carolina DOT. Do we have a motion regarding this resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman McAllen, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Councilman Larson. Discussion? Questions? Yes, Councilman Reitz?
Yes, Jared's going to explain exactly what took place that last minute with Justin Powell and the SC DOT?
Our administrator, both our administrator and.
Listen, either way, I just want to make sure everybody that's listening in and folks that are here get an idea of what happened.
And I'll let Jared kind of clarify about the last meeting we talked about at the workshop that Secretary Powell contacted us beginning of June timeframe, that it's a possibility of a large bridge grant. Obviously, it would take SC DOT to prioritize this project and put it forth as, for the entire state. So he communicated that to us. We presented this, at least at discussion at the workshop, the last meeting, and now we're bringing it forward for you all's consideration. But we do have a deadline, I believe, of August 1st, where the application has to be submitted to meet federal deadline. And, you know, there's not 100% certainty. There's probably 10% certainty. We talked to Secretary Powell, somewhere in that ballpark. I mean, we're competing against entire, across the country for this, these funds. So this at least gets us in the door for consideration for the federal bridge grant. So Jared, if you want to elaborate on that, if I missed anything?
No, that's, that's appropriate. So this is just an opportunity to construct the entirety of the corridor that we set out to at the initial onset of this project. We had to change course due to the funding, our inflationary pressures and rising costs that we incurred over life of the project. And the three lane bridge option that was recently approved by the State Infrastructure Bank was a result of having to build something within the means that we have. So this is an opportunity and it's, as Mr. Moore mentioned, it's not a guarantee, though we're competing nationwide.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilman Reitz?
Yeah. Jared, and Mr. Moore, thank you. How do we, you say it's about a 10% probability. How do we protect the work that the county and the town did to get that three lane bridge? This is focusing on the very large bridge.
Yes, I think Jared had sent some, we sent some information out earlier, but these projects will proceed in parallel. So to your question, we will continue, and if we don't get the grant, then the three lane bridge would continue. Maybe you can add some detail to that, Jared.
Yes, so this happens just to be, if this grant came available last year, we weren't positioned, ready for this. It just happens to be the right time both for us, the project, and DOT. So DOT, there was a comment made, a public comment earlier about the safety of existing Magna Creek. If this extended the bridge project where it would take longer for them to deliver a replacement to that bridge, DOT would not be interested. That's their highest priority, is the safety of that bridge. And it just coincides that the timing of this grant and the timing of where we are in the project, that they're on parallel tracks. And the reason, the background for that is the work that we've done in the last seven or eight years on the original proposed project, the six lane bridge, we're at about a 30 or 40% design overall. The last thing that was needed to finalize the funding and the funds, the environmental document, was the funding element. And that's where we were missing the $190 million. So what's been proposed with the three lane bridge to the State Infrastructure Bank is a conceptual plan. It's roughly 10% design. It's in a different location, has different elements that we're, we're working around as far as the missing the water line and access to Pinky Island. And so over the next six to nine months, we're going to have to work on a completely new environmental document and improve the design up to a 30 or 40%. And that's typically when you close out the environmental document. So we envision that it's going to take that same period of time to get this new three lane project to the same level of project design that the six lane project is already sitting at. And then we're expecting that if we put in, in August, that we would hear some type of notification by the end of the year, whether we kind of pass the first tranche, and then hopefully a full approval in that, that spring or summer of next year, which would put us in line with the final 30%, 40% design of the three lane bridge. At that time, if we get a yes vote from the grant opportunity from Federal Highway, then we would no longer move forward with the three lane project and execute the same schedule as approved by the SIB to deliver the six lane bridge. If we get a no vote, if we move forward and get a no vote, we discontinue the six lane project and we continue with the three lane project that we've been working on for the past several months in design.
Jared, listen, again, thank you. With a yes vote, we would automatically go to the larger bridge, correct?
No, a yes vote would give us the administrator the permission or authority to apply for this grant, and we would have two projects on parallel tracks. The six lane bridges would be sitting still essentially, just waiting on grant approval, while the three lane bridge catches up to the six lane design. And then at some point in the, the spring or summer of next year, there would be a decision made, depending on what we hear back from the grant, on which project moves forward.
Okay, let's go to next year. And Mr. Moore, this is going to help you to help me figure out or think about what we're doing. Let's say we get the approval for the grant next year. Does it automatically go to that big bridge? It's, it, does it take?
Well, the way we've written the resolution is, we've authorized me to apply for the grant. We have authorized me to accept it. So we would still come back to you all to accept the grant. But assuming council accepts the grant funding, it would move forward with the full project.
Yes, sir. The only thing I want to try to make everyone aware of, and I think it goes back to Ms. Lamarcas and what she said, we had a, we had a 2024 referendum. And I know it was split on, in my district on Hilton Head, so I'm getting some people that either vote or not vote for me upset. But my point is, we all have to understand the ramification. And I, I think between the 11,000 to 14,000 signatures against the monolithic Golden Gate Bridge, big thing, I believe the referendum, you know, I think we ought to, you know, consider what the people want. And I think with our workshop with Town Council, we heard from the mayor, we heard from council members, we heard from people. You know, bigger is not always better. So again, let's.
Would like to hear from Councilman McAllen.
I'm going to go out on a limb here. At this time of year, a lot of the federal agencies are contemplating the end of their fiscal year, which occurs on September 30th. And I have a feeling that the Federal Highway Administration has discovered there's some honey in the pot that they haven't yet decided what to do with. And they've been impressed by the progress that we've made here. And they've put a very short deadline on your application of August 1st, because they have to appropriate this money by September 30th. They don't have to spend it, but it must be appropriated. So they're going to have to act on your application a lot faster than everybody expects, because if they don't get this money appropriated by September 30th, they're going to lose it. And they don't want to lose it, because they'll never get their budget. Next year, if they can't, if they have to give money back, everyone frowns on that. Whether that's good or bad, I make no judgment. I'm just telling you the way it operates. So I have a feeling we're going to get a feedback on this very, very quickly, because that money has to be appropriated by the end of September. So if we're going to do this, we better get moving.
I'd just like to make a comment, 10% chance that we'd, we'd get the grant.
That's, that's just a ballpark of what we discussed with the secretary. But it really depends on what other projects have been put forth, where they are in terms of maturity, and, you know, is this a good investment? And so that'll be a decision that gets made by Federal Highway at the, at the federal level.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, just one more thing. You know, again, I'm happy at the 11th hour, federal funds are always welcome, but look what's going on here. The incredible work that the town and the county did together to come up with a resolution. We at the 11th hour have the ability, because they want to appropriate these funds before they lose them, and take out the, the, the working together and what we came up with for a resolution. You know, I just think we got to keep an eye on that.
Just to vote to do the application, it's not to accept the money. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, yes.
All right. We had a motion and a second. We had discussion. We're ready to vote.
Councilmember McAllen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
I'm going to say no.
Councilmember Passamit?
Yes.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-2.
All right. Our next one is number 22 on the agenda, 2025 slash 48. A resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute documents necessary and to provide funds from the Green Space Program Fund to the Open Land Trust for the acquisition of an interest in property located in unincorporated Jasper County known as the Chelsea Tracks. And then there's a list of all the property numbers for the acquisition of a conservation easement not to exceed the requested amount of $6 million to be paid back to the Green Space Program within 12 months. The physical impact is $6 million from the Green Space Fund account, number 4706010005440. Land acquisition. The funds would be reimbursed back to the Green Space Program. And I'd like to entertain, well, we have Mike McShane, the chairman, but I'd like to entertain a motion for discussion in a second. We have a motion by Councilman McAllen and a second by Councilman Glover.
Right, and then you left out the portion within 12 months, but payback, but I'll leave that off.
I think I said it, yeah. I said, that's very important, within 12 months.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. McShane, chairman of the Green Space Committee. Tell us all about it.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, council members, county administrators. Good to see you, sir. It's nice to be down here from Charleston. I am Mike McShane, and just for the record, I'm a resident of Charleston County. There are a number of people here tonight, if I may, Madam Chairman, just to identify, because I think it displays really the uniqueness of this particular project. You're about to take on, in my view, taking a historic action here. You're going to once again put money from this county into another county, but you're doing it in a fashion that you've not done before, where you're actually going to advance this to allow a nonprofit who took the challenge and courage to borrow $28 million to help them reduce that debt at today's rates. That's an extraordinary gift that that organization, the Nature Conservancy, has given to this area by taking on that challenge. Today, we have both, of course, Kate Schaefer from Open Land Trust is here, David Bishop from the Nature Conservancy, and also Lieutenant Colonel David Trail and Mary Ryan Krieger from the Department of Defense, therefore at, at the Marine Corps Air Station. David is the Director of Governmental External Relations, and Mary Ryan is the Community Plans and Liaison Officer. And they've all been very collaborative in working with the Green Space Committee and conservation in general. I also know that, I believe Administrator Andy Fulgham is still here from Jasper County, and I think Chairman Kemp is still here, sir. Yes, it's good to have him here as well. You have an opportunity tonight to, as I said, to take this historic effort to protect this 2,700-plus acres that could have otherwise been annexed and turned into several thousand units, that although maybe in Jasper County, those effects and impacts are going to be directly on Beaufort County. That's really why the wisdom of what you've decided to do, to allow this opportunity to occur. And for, for the benefit of the Nature Conservancy to advance this $6 million, because this will be the first of two applications coming in front of you for this project. One will be coming forthcoming for money you will leave in the dirt that will parallel what the state is going to be doing and Jasper County will be doing. Jasper County is committed to trying to have their program up and running by the fall. Open Land Trust will be making their application to the state this month for the board that I also serve on to take consideration in September. And you will be seeing a second project for what will be your normal green space grant coming forward, most likely in that same September timeframe. The plan is that this is a $34 million piece of property that Nature Conservancy has acquired for $32 million, of which you will participate in helping pay for the conservation easement, the permanent document that'll be there, regardless who the ultimate owner is. I'm going to come to that in just a moment. But the plan would be for the state, Beaufort County, Jasper County, and DOD to pay for what we believe will be estimated to be around $12 million for the conservation easement value based on that $34 million acquisition. The Forestry Commission is in the middle of a forest legacy grant to then, to take for the amount, the delta, to then take ownership of this track. That it in perpetuity will remain in the hands of the State Forestry Commission and be managed as a state forest, but also then give recreational opportunity to the public. And when you know that corridor, 462, between where Chelsea's located, and I don't know if you had, Sarah, one that showed, that went out to show the larger view, Gregory Neck would be on the western side, or in this case, I'm going to just refer to it. It's not going to show up there, but you're really creating this corridor along 462 between what you do with Gregory Neck and what you would do here at Chelsea. And really hence, what, what else will go, will then really, I think, follow this pathway. This has been shown time and time again. The reimbursable grant is new to here. It's not new to the state bank. It's what's enabled us to be able to do real estate on a quick transaction basis, and then still go through your normal process to be respectful to your ordinance to do this. Is there some risk? The answer would be yes, but the risk, I think, is very minimal. The fact that you're going to have Jasper County, Beaufort County, and the state, and DOD play a role makes it a very compelling application into DOD, and DOD will tell you today that that money is in their resources now. Is that, I want to make sure I'm speaking truthfully on that. But they'll go through this process. So when you mentioned, Mr. Glover, about 12 months, that'll be our best effort to get that money reimbursed in 12 months. It's got to go through the Navy process. It'll be there. And the administrator knows the Navy process all too well. But we'll champion that, and I think this has brought that kind of visibility to it. This is really a fascinating story. You, as a council, are taking a leadership on. I was teasing your colleague from Jasper County earlier that what you're really doing is helping both counties save themselves, save the municipalities from themselves.
That's true.
That's really what you're doing. You're, you're taking a preemptive strike here. And the fact that we don't know today what might come forward to us, that we need a group like the Nature Conservancy to run and, and move quickly. And by the fact that you've done this and helped them reduce the debt load on the borrowing of $28 million, I would suggest would make Mr. Bishop and his colleagues eager to work with Beaufort County in the future. The little bit of interest that you will lose by not this being in green space over the 12 months is really going to be pennies on what the impacts would be if we lost this deal, and that turned into 4,000-plus units. All would have dumped right there at 462 and 170. That's why I think this is extraordinary, that this council can take this action, and historic.
Are you open to questions now?
Absolutely.
Okay.
May I?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McShane, first of all, as I prepared for coming here tonight, reading this, I couldn't help but think of something you've said, I think, every time you stand before us, is how do we leverage what we have to get more to protect both of our counties? And kudos, I'm telling you some. You cease to amaze me, and I mean that in a good way. I'm a difficult, to be pleased this way, the way money's spent, and this is a great way.
I'm a difficult, to be pleased this way, the way money's spent, and this is a great way. And I think you answered it just in the last second. I was going to ask you, in a 12-month period, or are you saying maybe it's going to take a little bit more? What kind of interest rate did Beaufort County get for that, or I think you answered that saying, it's just going to be out at Green Space?
It'd be pennies on what the impacts would be, I believe, to the county if this were to not happen.
Listen, we have a double win-win here tonight with Jasper, Mr. Fulgham. Animal Services, now this. Is there going to be a third thing that we're going to work with you on tonight? But thank you, guys.
Okay. All right, Councilman Glover?
Yeah, just to clarify, Mr. McShane, you mentioned the Forestry Commission. Explain that again to me.
So the current plan is for the Nature Conservancy, who is now the owner, is collaborating with our State Forestry Commission because this area was a priority for the State Forestry Commission to acquire a property like this. This fits every one of their interests. It would make great sense because there are federal programs that will allow the Forestry Commission to tap into forest legacy dollars in an area that's already in a highly managed state for forestry. That's why it's such a priority for them. It would then allow public recreational access to it, be it entered into a wildlife management program or some other public access program. Forestry Commission will do that.
Web Center.
That is correct.
It's going to be a state forest.
State forest, right.
All the things you can do on a state forest, which the-
Web Center is owned by DNR, right?
Yes, it's going to be owned by, Web Center is owned by DNR, yes, sir.
This one will be owned by?
The Forestry Commission, the State Forestry Commission.
Wow.
A partner to DNR, same territory, state agency.
No, that's, to me, that's gravy. I mean, I didn't expect that at all. I've loved, I've, I-
Mr. Glover, when I was chairman of DNR, I couldn't get the State Forestry Commission candidly to come even talk to us about land conservation.
Now they are.
Today, they're beating on the door wanting to do this because they recognize the value of doing that.
That's only going to enrich this area with the open space and access to, thank you, sir. That's all I want to say.
There's so many benefits to this in terms of the frontage on the Broad River, from a water quality standpoint, to water quantity issues, whether it's too much water or too little water. There's recreational benefits to this. The fact that you're not going to see this high-pressure density development that could occur because there'll be this permanent easement regardless who owns it. If we were not successful in having the forest legacy grant come through, TNC will do like they've done with Gregory Neck, and there's a market for these type of properties. But you have the assurance, your money has gone into the easement.
Right.
That's in perpetuity. That will assure that there's going to be limited development ever. Whatever the easement ultimately comes to will be very limited and whatever development impacts are there.
Yeah, see, that's what I thought was going to happen here. So when you mentioned the Forestry Commission, it was like, whoa, good, go ahead. I'm through.
If I'm not mistaken, this is one of the few properties in our part of the state that they would own?
That is correct, which is why this addresses why this has been a priority zone for the Forestry Commission.
Okay. Any other questions or comments before we have the vote?
I just have one comment. I believe you said last time when you came out and talked about this, that we'll get the $6 million back, or am I wrong about that?
You are. This is what you're-
Oh, I am, okay.
So you're going to take an action tonight on a reimbursable grant.
Oh, okay.
Then you'll take another action later this fall when I come in with an application for what you will leave in the project. So this is going to be two steps on this particular property. Tonight is the reimbursable grant. This fall, we'll be asking for what I think estimated will be $2 million for, $2 million that you will leave there. And the money, this $6 million will come back. I have high confidence it will come back.
Okay, okay.
And ultimately, what that means, you have left $2 million on a $34 million deal.
I understand that.
So think about, in Jasper County, then, you would have had two projects, you would have put $3 million in. The total value of the two projects is about $65 million. That's 5%.
And it's also great that Jasper County will be putting some money into the dirt.
The administrator even made that commitment to, again, this evening, to be facilitating their aspect of that. And I have confidence that Mr. Fulgham is going to deliver on that. And then I can bring full confidence, the state is going to be delivering on that. So you're going to have equal partners. You're in this unique position to help reduce some debt because we're asking an NGO to go out and be the courage. As I said, we don't know when that may come back to us as a benefit.
All right, any other comments, questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McShane, this track very clearly, in my opinion, with your theme at Green Space, to accelerate conservation. I think that this is exactly what that stands for, and I congratulate you and that team there for doing this. I see it happen because now I'm on the committee, and it's a, it's a program that is functioning fully to accelerate that conservation. So I offer my congratulations to everybody there.
We appreciate your participation and I offer the compliments. Frankly, your county attorney, Brian Holbert, has been fantastic in helping work through this new model. Your assistant county administrator, Chuck Atkinson, has been fantastic, and Mark Davis on your planning staff's been a big help to facilitate this, even this concept. Yes, this is unique, new, first time in front. Frankly, most places across the state would have been, this would have been so complicated, we wouldn't have gotten, it may not even have been worth trying to pursue. This county demonstrates again and again and again its leadership in that regard.
I would venture to say nationally, this is unique, too.
I'm not aware of any program that has done this action, and after tonight, you would have done it twice.
Okay, we ready to take the vote? All in favor, signify? All right, Mr. Aye, and Mr. Passamit, aye. Thank you.
On the bathroom, she's saying aye.
She, okay.
If I may, Madam Chairman, just-
Can I ask Mr. McShane while he's there, just to make some comments on some future-
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of updates. The Green Space Committee will meet this Friday, and after Friday, we'll update that spreadsheet that we've talked about that we will then forward out. But just to give everyone here, there are three fee simple projects that we're going to be reviewing. All of these have been in front for due diligence, so now we're going to, we'll be getting that information back. So at some point, we'll come back with a recommendation on these three projects. But just to give a sort of a color of what's in front of us, in the western region, which is, will be bluffed in, is the Book Walter PUD track. In the south region, on Hilton Head, is the Sea Island Parkway track. And in the east, is actually a city of Beaufort, what we call the Messick's track. I think I'm saying that name correctly.
That's near Ladies Island.
Yes. That's in the eastern region. So those three fee simple, all fee simple tracks, we'll be discussing on Friday at Green Space Committee and then coming, and come back forward at some point this fall.
Thank you. Was that, Councilman McAllen, is that what you were meaning?
That's what I wanted, I was going to ask him to do that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much for being here and the Nature Conservancy for sticking their neck out again for conservation and preservation. All right, last thing, and a very important thing on our agenda, is reappointing Senator Tom Davis, Michael McShane, and Councilmember Larry McAllen to the Green Space Advisory Committee for a four-year term with expiration date of July 2029. I have a motion to reappoint these three individuals to the Green Space-
So approved.
All right. Council Reed's in a second by Councilman Bartholomew. All in favor? Raise your hand. It is unanimous. All right. There being no further business, we are adjourned. Thank you.